Thirty-seven, we're gonna call a planning board meeting to order. First order of business is A and R for Davis Street and Tracy Horton. Carol?
Yep. I was here a couple of weeks ago for the Davis Street layout. We ended up getting another survey done and another plan, which hopefully you have seen, and we're just looking for you to sign off on it. It turned out to be instead of just three property lines, we ended up with seventeen individual parcels that needed to be sorted out, juggled, and fit back into the puzzle.
Okay.
So, we're officially done. This will be the layout, the official layout of Davis Street. Go take this to the registry, get it done, forever and ever, amen.
Okay. Anne?
It needs all the requirements they did have, one, a request, two, and I'll blow this up a little bit. He refers to these as parcels, as opposed to lots, but if that doesn't alter or change the content, it does meet all the other requirements.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the plan for Davis Street? No? No? I just wanted to ask a question to make Carol stay here for a while.
Just praise.
Okay. Hearing no questions or comments, then I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan for the Webster redevelopment authority.
And direct staff to sign.
And direct staff to sign on our behalf. Somebody would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carol, good luck with your new project.
I think construction's easier.
Pine Wood Estates, Oakwood Drive. Anne, you just wanna comment, this is gonna be continued to Thursday?
Yes, the engineer has requested a continuance to next Thursday. Chuck has been working diligently with Mrs. Shuretti's engineer. They are very, very close, anxious to get it done.
Okay. Chuck?
Yeah.
You're good? Mrs. Shuretti, you're good? We'll see you next meeting? Okay?
I just wanna thank you for the patience with this issue. I inherited it, and it's just been very difficult and confusing because I haven't understood a lot of it.
Right.
And I really just want you to know how hard I've been working to just have this move forward and be done with it. And it just seems like little things keep appearing, and I hope by next week this can all be resolved and...
I'm told by Thursday we'll have everything in line, so I look forward to finally signing off.
Have it on the town warrant, so hopefully that'll get passed.
Good luck to you. Hopefully it works.
And I just start enjoying my retirement, so, thank you all.
Well, thank you for sticking with it, we appreciate it. Planning board recommendations, oh, do I need a motion to continue that to next week, or we also?
The recommendations, I did applaud that.
No, I mean, do we need a motion to continue, Mrs. Shuretti, or we're, that's fine, we don't need...
Yeah, we should have a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue.
To the next meeting?
May fourth.
May fourth, okay. We have a motion and...
A second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, planning board recommendations for historic tax credit letter.
Okay, so there are two, we received applications from Prospect Street, also previously known as Thompson School, and forty-one Prospect Street, known as, what was the name of it? Forty-one is the Brock Castle School. They have been for quite a while now used for housing. There is money available for those schools to be renovated, and they've applied for historic tax credits from the feds, and the feds like to see a letter of recommendation from the Historic Commission, which is gonna be taken up tomorrow, and they've also asked the planning board to review it. Both applications, the exact same. I added the area photograph, never be renovating it to continue it as subsidized housing. So, no change in use, no need for site plan review, but they are looking for a recommendation from the planning board, go under form of a memo explaining that meeting was held, this was on the agenda.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Anne regarding that? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to direct Anne to write the letter for the...
Good project. The buildings really need renovation, and that extra federal money will happen.
Building inspector shaking his head behind you, yes, so I'm assuming that that's a positive thing. No other questions?
No other questions.
Then entertain a motion to instruct Anne to draft a letter.
I'll make a motion to instruct Anne to draft a letter.
For both schools?
For both schools.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion from anyone?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm just gonna jump to B first, because that one's one fourteen Point Breeze Road. We haven't heard back from the engineer on the comments from the peer review, so we're gonna continue you to the next meeting, okay? Unless you have something you wanna add to it, we're just, I think...
There's some favors, there's some questions, they're out.
I think we, because of the other issue, I think I'd prefer to do it at the next meeting when we actually open it, so, is that, okay, Anne?
Yeah.
Are you good with that? Everybody, does anybody have any issues?
No.
So, I'll need a motion to continue one fourteen Point Breeze Road to the next, actually not the next meeting, the meeting after, right?
Which is May twenty-ninth, I believe.
May twenty-ninth.
Let's all check that, I think it is the twenty-ninth. I have it on there.
No, it's twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we have a motion to continue to the twenty-second? What was that?
Oh, I'll make a motion to continue to the May twenty-second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sorry, and just please respond to Chuck as soon as possible. Okay, so, I'm assuming everybody else is left for three hundred Thompson Road?
I don't know, are people aware, they're just considering... I got calls today, I see people who'd like to attend Point Breeze.
Okay. If anybody was here for the Point Breeze project, that's continued, so anybody else that wants to stay for the next site, next thing, which is three hundred Thompson Road, hang in there. So, so the next item on the agenda is modifications of the site plan for sales and commercial parking of three hundred Thompson Road. Anne, you wanna start us off with that?
Okay, I'm just trying to get us to, since the last meeting, we've received comments, I'm having a hard time hearing when people talk about it.
Excuse me? We can't hear, thank you.
All right, since your, since the last meeting, the revised site plan had been sent, had been received, we had comments from the Neighborhood Association, as well as the lawyer representing them. This is the modified site plan that has been submitted.
Anne, turn on your mic.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so this is the modified, the modified site plan that, that has been submitted based on comments from the engineering review that went to their engineer, and Chuck can speak to his review of this.
Okay.
Can I do that now?
You're up, buddy.
All right. So, there were some, some minor comments, and then there were some other comments that I think the board should discuss. Do you want me to go through all the comments, or...
I think just the ones we wanna discuss, because all the other ones, everybody had a chance to review already?
Yep.
As far as the minor comments, it's...
So, there was some signage that is recommended for the entrance to the site that basically tells tractor-trailer truck drivers or trucks that they can't park here, or load or unload here, and, you know, based on discussions with the engineer, should have some sort of verbiage on the sign to tell the, the drivers where to go, so, go to the marina, what, what have you. The landscaping and buffering for the project, it currently has, I believe it's showing an existing fence, and there was some discussion about some existing landscaping that was previously planted, but there's, the plan doesn't really go into a lot of detail with that, so, I don't know if the board wants to discuss buffers, landscaping, that sort of thing.
I, I will note that the, the buffer plant material that was planted not on the actual site, it was planted on private property, so, this site plan doesn't show any landscaping for screening specific to this property.
Okay. All that other screening that was planted previously was on the neighbor's property?
Yeah, planted on private property.
Yep.
So, Chuck, as, right now, there's no screening, there's no sort of barrier that exists?
I believe that there is a fence on the, was that the northwest side of the site, between, say, where the proposed shed is going and the neighbor's property? I think you can see it there, the line with the little circles.
Okay. And that's proposed to be a chain link fence?
I think it's, it's a vinyl plank fence.
Okay.
A privacy fence?
Yes, and that's, and I believe that's existing. And then signage, I, I don't know if there's any proposed signage as far as, like, you know, commercial sales, that sort of thing, there's, there's nothing noted on the plan, so, my suggestion is that if there's not going to be any signage, they should add a note to the plan saying that.
Okay.
And those are, those are really the ones I think the, the board should discuss.
Okay.
One last thing on the fence, the height, six feet? Is that what they're proposing, six-foot-high vinyl fence?
What's, so that fence is there now, existing?
Right.
And I, I wanna say it is six feet, although I'm not completely sure, I don't remember exactly.
But that's on this property?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
There, there had been some discussion about the fact that whether or not bathrooms were gonna be provided, the building commissioner could expand on that, but it was determined that bathrooms are not required for this, and that it could be conditioned into the decision that all bathroom facilities would be provided at the, at the marina.
Okay.
The reason the use works the way it does, and again Ted's here to speak to it, is that this is a separate business entity, like a division of the marina, it's not a department, it's a division, which makes it its own separate business entity, and it is, which is what makes it a standalone business in its own right.
Okay. Ted, did you wanna talk to that, as far as, no, you don't wanna?
You got it straight right there.
Okay.
So, you have, you have your main use, and then you have your accessory use.
Okay.
Okay. You did receive a, a number of comments, you've got some comments from Attorney Keritzie, and you have comments from the Neighborhood Association, which came in last week that have been on the website for a little bit now.
Mm-hmm.
Did you want me to open up any of these documents?
I've seen them, I don't know if anybody else needs to open them, otherwise, I'm assuming that Attorney Keritzie would like to address this, which... Welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Chair members of the board, my name is George Keritzie, I'm an attorney in West Boylston. I represent the Thompson Road Neighborhood Association and the Valeris, which are direct abudders to this site. I've submitted a letter to the board dated April seventeenth, on which I wanna largely rely. There are multiple problems with this site plan application. Fundamental question, the first fundamental issue is that this site plan is proposing a building on-site. Webster zoning requires fifty feet of frontage. This property doesn't have it. Your original site plan approval in two thousand and fourteen had no building on-site, yet they built it anyways. They built it without a building permit and without site plan review. They now propose to move that building deeper into the lot in order to comply with setback, but they don't have sufficient frontage, and they have not produced a variance from the zoning board that would authorize any construction on this site, which is a requirement for site plan review. The lot does not qualify for a building. They are proposing it for a sales office, respectfully, federal law. Federal law requires all places of employment that have one to fifteen employees to have a bathroom facility and lavatory facility on-site. It's not discretionary, it's not up to the board of health, it is federal law. It's under OSHA, I'll give you the site, it's twenty-nine CFR ten, nineteen-ten.
It's in your letter.
It's federal law. So, to say that we're not gonna have a bathroom there, they can walk a thousand feet down the road to another bathroom facility, does not qualify. This is particularly concerning, because people now, males that are on the site, are relieving themselves behind the shed, and it's visible to the neighbors, it's uncomfortable, and it's not fair. People are not gonna be, people are not going to walk down the street a thousand feet to go to the bathroom. They're gonna go outside, and they're gonna pee against the, the shed, or against the fence, and it's not fair to the abudders. They have provided no potable water, which is also required. They have provided no, they have no provisions for how they're gonna bring electricity there. There's no provisions for utilities into the site. So, unless they're gonna operate a generator to get their electricity, which the neighbors are now gonna have to deal with power generators providing electricity, there's no provision on their site plan to electrify the site. Access is extremely limited. The strip is less than fifty feet wide. The bylaw requires fifty feet of width, in fact, is, this is forty-three feet at the street, and it narrows as it goes deeper into the property. It doesn't even maintain the forty-three feet. The bylaw has a fifty-foot width in order to provide buffer between this property and the abudders, and that, and right now, where the driveway is located, there's virtually no buffer to the existing houses for this driveway. The site plan that they've given to you has three different widths. They have a fourteen-foot width driveway, they have a twenty-foot width driveway, they have a twenty-four width driveway. They haven't even identified exactly what they're planning on building there. That's wrong, the site plan's wrong. There is something that should certainly cause concern for this board, is that there's no stormwater management permit, which is a planning board issue, they never got one in two thousand and fourteen, and yet they're here again with alterations, and there's, and because of their storage facilities, the exterior fleet storage, this is defined by your own bylaw as a hotspot. There is no stormwater management, and stormwater management requires that they comply with the stormwater management handbook to the maximum extent possible. They haven't done anything for stormwater management under the bylaw, and yet they come in with an application for this site plan approval. The bylaw has several criteria relative to how do we fit this use, or this contemplated use, into the neighborhood. It's supposed to be compatible with the surrounding area, not here the case. All of the surrounding properties are residential, and there is little regard for those residentially-used properties with this plan. They provide a six-foot fence on the plan, and it's not vinyl, it's a chain link fence, perfectly visible, six feet, hasn't been touched since it was first installed, and it's not sufficient screening, which is what the bylaw requires. That's the purpose of site plan. Building inspector in this town has filed multiple enforcement orders against them, and multiple times they were ignored. They appealed one of the orders to the zoning board, who affirmed the building inspector, which was not appealed by the applicant to the Superior Court of the Land Court, and despite a third enforcement order, they respond by suing the town, suing the building inspector, saying, "Don't enforce against me, I'm going to the planning board to, to bootstrap and rubber stamp my violation of site plan." They already used the property for retail sales, which is not allowed, and was clearly told by the zoning board that it's not allowed use, and they're conducting those sales in the access strip. Cars come in, park there, engines running between the two residential homes, bothering the, the neighbors at the site. It's not compatible with the existing neighborhood. They, the use as resident for retail sales increases the risk of emergency, the need for emergency services there. The driveway is not accessible for those services, there's parking on the street for the trucks, and putting a sign up saying, "Don't park here," is not gonna do it. Thompson Road is a narrow, two-lane, one lane each direction road at this site. There's a fire hydrant on one side of the access strip, and there's a utility pool on the other one, on the other side. It's not fair for the abudders to have trucks parking in front of them while they unload in order to bring in their inventory, which they're not even allowed to have at this time. They have produced no traffic study to this board to consider, which is a site plan requirement, that they should give you a traffic study. They don't even tell you how they estimated the number of trips, and the number of trips that they've estimated are the, is the same number that they have, that they estimated in two thousand and fourteen, and that's not fair. With no traffic study, no review, they're asking you to approve this thing and... With no traffic study, no review, they're asking you to approve this thing and rubber stamp their, their violation. Not only that, but the original use contemplated storage of the boats, parking, storage, however, whatever term you want to use, that's what they, that's what they contemplated. It was a seasonal use, parking from November to April. Now it's going to be daily, some, all days, all summer long, as people come in to buy boats, buy docks, buy pontoons, with inventory scattered around, and the place looks like a junkyard right now. Noise, dust, unsightliness, those are the very subject of years of complaints. With limited screening, no real effort to attend to those, enforcement without effect, it's a horrible plan. And respectfully, I think it's just, it's a greedy request, it's ignored every years of disrespect to this town's bylaws, the, the town zoning enforcement officer. It's excessive and it should be denied, respectfully. Thank you.
Ann?
Well, they can have parking information, I mean, that's, thank you. They do have some, some information about trips per day on the plan. I mean, they've stated their case, it's part of the exhibit list, it's up to the board. I don't know if the applicant's here to speak to any of that. But screening is of concern. There are a number of things here that would be put forward to as conditions of approval if you decide to go that route.
Mm-hmm.
The signage, the whole thing about, you know, whether or not the trucks are going to obey the law and not park on the road, that becomes a, that becomes a law enforcement issue, that's not a site plan issue. The entrance and the frontage, this is a modification of an already approved plan, so that frontage was approved as part of the initial base plan. So a handful of these things, certainly Ted can speak further about the use, and a number of things can be conditioned pretty heavily for, from an enforcement perspective, so...
Okay. I'm really not a fan of recommending or suggesting this, but in this particular case, because not everybody from the board has been there, it might be worth actually going out and actually seeing what that screening looks like and what's there. I, I really, I highly, I, pictures don't do it justice. I think that it would be great to be out there and see it. I, I really tend to tell people not to do this ever, but in this particular case, I think it'd be worth it, and I don't know if the board would be, think that that's a good idea or not.
It might be, because the state, state, there was recently an open meeting law determination that site visits could, could be difficult. We, you could authorize two people to go out or one person and videotape it, or as long as no more than two of you go at a time.
Yeah.
We'd have to work with the applicant to go out there and, and they're very, we would have to post it and all that stuff, which I can take care of, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I realize it's a pain in the neck, but I think that in this particular instance, it might be one of the few times that I would probably agree to do that.
Okay.
Only because, obviously, there's a great deal of interest and we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can for everybody involved. So I think it's, it's a great idea and we can, I don't know how we can work out the details of not offending the open meeting laws and maybe we should...
As long as we carefully notice it and post it as a meeting and everyone has the, you know, you're, you're there strictly for fact finding, to ask questions, there is absolutely to be no discussion.
Right.
You're there to look and listen and nothing else.
And we can set those up, like I said, in groups of two or whatever. I feel pretty comfortable, I've been there enough times now, but I, I certainly think it'd be worth it for people to visit, whether it's with Ted or with you or somebody, I don't really know.
Okay.
But I'm assuming that we need to do this in your office and set up the logistics of how to do that?
I can do that, yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll work that up, I'll poll, I'll talk to the applicant and arrange for two or three times.
Mm-hmm.
And then people can sign up based on their availability. For those of you who do work and need to make it after hours, I'm willing to stay.
Right.
That date and to accommodate your schedule, because I think you're right, this is important.
Right. And I think it makes sense. So with that being said, I would recommend that we continue this.
I do have one question since Ted's here.
Oh, please, yeah, go ahead.
So Ted, the applicant, Attorney Christie brought up zoning violations of the driveway being 43 feet and also the shed being not in compliance. Are those in fact violations? That would have to be cured before, as part of these, their submission requirements?
The, the shed, I don't believe so. The use is allowed, it's a B4 zone, so...
Yeah, not asked about the use, but that they also brought up the, the counselor also brought up the driveway with being 43 feet, not 50.
That has nothing to do with me. That would be something you guys would decide? The, the width on the 43 feet with the entryway?
So that isn't per se a zoning violation that would, that would trigger a ZBA application?
Yes.
Okay.
If it was a new application.
Right.
That's right, if it was a new application.
New application, it would.
Right, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up.
Hold on, you're going to have to come up as, and represent the applicant if you want.
Thank you. Just, we did, sorry, Nick Adamopoulos on behalf of the applicant, I apologize. We did get Mr. Keritzky's letter towards the end of last week.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I was in trial, so I couldn't respond to it. We understand that, obviously, there are some notes that need to be added to these plans based upon the April 4th letter that we did receive from CHA, which we want to get on here before that May meeting, but I also want to put a formal response to all the items in that letter, so I can get that before the board for that meeting also. So I do think that some of those issues that have been raised in the letter and before you today, we'll have formal responses to those items for you for that May meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Ted's a hard guy to get a hold of, so. Since he's here, I figured I'd ask, get those answers cleared up.
Okay. So we're going to recommend a continuance, so I need a motion to do that, and, and the continuance is for the explicit purpose of doing site visits that don't jeopardize our open meeting laws, and we will coordinate those with the applicant and through Ann's office. Is that, so I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Sorry. I have that motion in a second. If there is any other discussion from the board?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, next meeting, May 22nd?
I'm going to double check that because there are a lot of people in the room, I want to make sure we got that right.
Great.
Unless you all want to meet on Memorial Day.
Not really. So we'll continue to May 22nd, we'll conduct those site visits in the meantime. We do expect a response from the applicant to your letter, Mr. Keritzky, and we'll go from there, okay? Thank you all.
I'm not going to make that meeting, sorry, I almost said, I'm not going to make that meeting, I'll be flying out to Portugal.
Well, they said that they're going to start live streaming.
Engineering update, Chuck?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to send... Sure, so, I've stopped out and...
Folks, you're going to have to keep it quiet till you get out the door, please. Thank you.
1315 Old Worcester, nothing, nothing new there.
They put a foundation in?
Yes.
Ted? At 1315?
That's my foundation.
You gave him the permit to do the foundation?
Yeah.
Okay.
The rest of all the...
Okay. But we still don't have a, a site plan that's...
We do have signed site plan.
But I mean, we haven't done any inspections or anything based on that site plan, and we're still going to require them to inspect all that stuff that they buried 10 feet in the ground, so they're going to have to do videos or do something to facilitate that because there's no way that I'm accepting what was there.
And the, the health director has been, she's been working with them to get them compliant with their septic and all that good stuff.
Okay.
Septic looking at it, so...
Okay.
64 Worcester Road, the United Medical Site, they're, they're doing rough grading there still. I didn't see any, I didn't see any issues when I stopped by. Goya, the grass is just starting to come in, they still have, you know, some little finishing touches to do on the site and then obviously submit their ASBIL plan. And then I also went out to Oakwood, they still have a couple of things they need to do, so...
Is she going to be all set for Thursday? Are we hope, I mean, do we have hope that she's going to be?
Super close, yeah.
Please.
I see it as, super close, don't you see it as super close?
God, I feel bad for her, it's awful, but, I mean, I understand.
There are lots of bits and pieces to that story.
Yeah, okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Nick, you're up again. Tell us where we are now, because...
He gets an update that I just posted, and my apologies to, to Curly, because they gave us to it on the 17th and I just put it up today. So here is their update, oh, no, wrong one.
I can just let them know if that works, do you, Ann? They did final, they are going to, they find a contractor to redo the entire roof. I did speak to them last week, they finalized the actual contractor, they're going to be onsite starting on June 15th to redo both roofs on both properties. Further, they did identify a third-party company that has, is going to provide them with 12 units. They're going to place those units at the roof level, right outside the walls of the facility, at the upper parking lot and at the boundary line with Price Chopper. They put those up for, I believe, five to seven days, they collect data, those are then returned back to the third party, they will analyze it and put a report together. And then the hope is that once the roof is on, we will then get the second shipment of 12 units, place them on the exact same areas for the exact same period of time, send those back and then get the same reports so we can see what has ultimately changed.
How much, how much has changed?
But those units have been, they're on the mail that come to the facility, they get them right from the third party by mail, they get put on, they'll collect for about five to seven days, like I said. The belief is that starting the 15th of June, that construction will start on the roof, should be done by hopefully month end. So the only request I was going to have to the board was due to the fact that there's likely not to be much in large changes between now and then, that the, that Curly be able to continue to give Ann updated monthly emails with our next in-person being in July, because that would give us enough time to get back the third-party report from them. I could come back in June, but I wouldn't have the second set of documents for us to really compare between each other.
You're likely going to be here anyway, but that's okay, we'll see you in July.
Yeah.
I said you're likely going to be here anyway, but we'll see you in July, that's fine.
In July, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we can do that, I just don't know what we'll have for major updates on emails between now and then.
That's, we understand, as long as we're moving forward, right, Ann?
Yeah. And, and Nick, I think, because, I, I think that if, I mean, this is helpful, but you gave us more detail than this did, so if, if you don't want to come back specifically, a little more detail would be good.
So I'm hoping for the, the May one, for example, we'll be able to give you data about the, when we put the 12 items outside, how long they were out there, the date range for that.
An explanation of what they are, maybe a picture, pictures of where you put them, that would be great.
Certainly get you that.
Okay.
Nick has been, been very responsive. We did receive a written complaint about one particular day that it was pretty powerful. And I know that Nick has been working with Curly, so at the very least, there's been a better response.
Okay.
Let's all hope that this solves the problem, whatever, whatever the end result is, let's hope it solves the problem, because summer's coming and we know that, that sticky hot weather is when we smell it the most.
Okay.
Yes, I agree. So I'll work with Jim, I'll make sure that you get a much more detailed listing with any sort of attachments that we can, until that roof's ultimately changed and we get the comparison, and then hopefully I'll work to get you guys those reports ahead of time so you can analyze as much as you want and we can do a full presentation of the reports.
And DEP is following this, they do go to our website, they follow this, and so we've been sharing information with DEP about their, about their permit from the state, so...
And just in full disclosure, we are working with the town, there's going to be a proposal to move, so Curly has both recreational licenses and medicinal licenses. Currently, the manufacturing for medicinal sites in Wakefield, we are working, starting the process to transition those licenses to the facility, which would, if we can get through the town, that'd be something we also have to come back before you guys with after we talk to the selectmen, would be the ultimate reduction in the amount of plant rooms in that facility with an increase in manufacturing rooms, so we would be taking out plants anyways, which would be a reduction in the odor causing and increasing with some more edible manufacturing based upon that. So that's, we more information we'll have for you as we move forward too.
Okay.
But as of right now, that's also planned, so we're going to reduce the amount of plant rooms.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, any, any change in the, the status of their permitting in that building would require a modification of the planning board, special permit.
So we, I believe we're going to go forward on May 8th to the selectmen to get the town administrator approval to modify the existing host community agreement. We will then have to do a new outreach meeting with the community, and then we'd come back before you, so...
Okay.
I hope it'll be to run that concurrent, hopefully with coming before you guys anyways, and we can kind of address it all at once.
Okay, sounds good. See you in July.
Wait, wait. Always have a few, I always have a couple, a couple of questions. So just to clarify, so the, the first testing is going to be done with the old roof or without a roof?
With the old roof in place, so it exists, as it exists right now, so we can measure that with the current conditions. Like I said, they're doing it roof level, at the boundary line with Price Chopper, the upper parking lot of the facility, and outside certain exterior walls, so we can just measure, if it's not the roof, we can see if it's just something else they can touch on the exterior.
All right, so we're doing old roof and then we're going to do the new roof.
Yep.
The other thing that would help me in this issue is, I haven't done any research into this, but standards or data that's out there for, say, you know, this odor level is detectable at this range, or this odor, you know, an increased odor level is detected at an increased range, to try to get a target of where an acceptable level would be, so it's not, somebody drives by and says, "Oh, it stinks," and then we're back here arguing about, you know, so, I think that would be, information on that would be helpful too, if you have it.
Yeah, I can, I'll do some research into some of those states out west that have been in this a little bit longer, because that information...
Yeah, because there is some data, and, and what the Mass DEP said, but it's, I think that, you know, what are we trying to target, is it?
Yes, I think once we get those levels from this test...
And just be sure to document where those...
Levels are?
Yeah, where those instruments are that are measuring what they are and document those with pictures so that we can see...
Hopefully get that for that May, so you get photos, the, I'll give you the make and model, all that information.
Yeah, and that's all good, but what I'm saying is, the standard we're, we're going to try to shoot for, where you're saying this odor level shouldn't be noticeable within the Price Chopper parking lot.
That's the key. All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Is that it?
Were you, were you going to help me organize with Susan the site visits?
100%. Do you want, I'll show you a little more on here.
Work it out.
Yeah, we can do it whichever way you want.
Okay.
Silent, you can do it. There's no posting for two people, we can talk to you.
They're now recommending that you do that.
Yeah. Thank you guys.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move a second.
Dan.
Thank you, we're so quiet today.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody liked that idea or not, but I'd maybe say just to make sure that it knows what you want.
Turn off our wake-up calls. Everybody wouldn't mind.
I might have to turn our lights off.
Did you want to come with us up home? No, I'm better. Recently?
Oh, you're no fun, Chuck. We can go. Hi Chuck, you're, if you got to go to the party.